9.3P will be polled from the consent agenda.
Would you mind mentioning what that is for the viewers?
Yeah, so those are agreements with Heidi Kosky Consulting, both of them. So one is for coaching in the district in general, and then one is for the Fitch Mountain preschool coaching.
Okay, great, thank you. All right.
9.3O and 9.3P.
All right, I'll take a quick minute to welcome everybody, and thank you very much for joining us this evening. This is our Wednesday, June 19th, HUSD trustees meeting, and those of you that are joining us, watching us delayed, thank you for tuning in. We will go ahead and begin with, oh, I need to actually make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Oh, my pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry. Erin, let's go ahead and do that. Sorry, sorry, it's my fault. Thank you.
(inaudible)
All right. May I go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as corrected?
Public comment first? No?
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
Geez, can we start over?
(laughing)
All right, Mr. Vanden, who will give the public comment?
Yeah, so it's actually, it's my pleasure to introduce you all to Jeff Franny, who's here.
Oh, yay.
Jeff, you want to stand up or wait?
Yay!
So Jeff is the new HES campus principal, comes to us from Oakland, from La Escolita, where he was a K-8 principal last three years, and is an escrow on a home in Santa Rosa.
Yay!
Yeah, so making the move and really excited to be here. He joined us for our end-of-year retreat when we talked about trauma, trauma education for our staff and students on Thursday, and it was just great to spend time with him. So we're really looking forward to his leadership at HES, so.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to have you.
Yeah.
All right, if I haven't forgotten anything else, I'm thinking that we're going to approve the consent agenda. May I ask for a motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, that passes. Let me flip to where I need to be here. All right, again, anyone that has any comments, please make sure that you take a second to grab a card in the back and fill that out. Thank you very much. We'll start with, are we on 10.1? Geez, okay, sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. All right, 10.1 Equity Task Force Action Plan.
All right, so I'm not going to spend a great deal of time on this tonight. We talked about it in depth at the last board meeting. This is your second time seeing the action plan before you. I would, I do want to point out one change, based on our conversation last week. It's highlighted in yellow on the screen. It's not in your packets. So we have added, and I need my glasses, but we have added an action item to establish a specific set of student outcomes and survey data to measure HUSD's progress in equity work. And we'll work on that next year with, hopefully having a public-facing kind of data dashboard around equity, or just in general that incorporates equity, spring of 2020. So I thought that was a strong recommendation, Ariselli, that you brought up, and then we actually had some public comments supporting that, and agreed true equity is going to be measured in student outcomes, so want to commit to doing that. Otherwise, it is the same. Again, I want to give context. This was the end of a year-long listening campaign to our community. These are issues that were identified by the community. This is really the what of the work. We've identified things we need to fix, and now we need to dive deep into the how and come up with a lot of details and solutions. We will begin tackling many of these issues in August, and it is clearly just the beginning of a process. Really pleased to, you know, one of the action items was an additional parent outreach coordinator at the secondary, so we'd have a full-time person at primary, full-time at secondary. You have before you later in the board meeting revised job description that places, I negotiated with a classified unit to place that position at a higher pay rate. We were not getting candidates, and a week later, we have a solid cadre of candidates that we're really, really, really excited about, that we'll be interviewing next week, Tuesday. So I'm very pleased about that, and really think it's going to make a big difference. So, any questions about the action plan?
No.
You're voting on it today. I don't think it's necessary, it's more symbolic than anything, but what you are voting on is blessing the actions in there, and there's some monumental ones, right? There's combining the kindergartens under one school, there's saying, yes, we are moving to one elementary school by voting for this, and so that is an important vote, largely symbolic because these are very general at this point, but important nonetheless, so.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the Equity Task Force Action Plan? One second, please.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
I just made a comment as we were leaving, going to close. I mentioned that today was June 19th, which is Juneteenth, those who know the African-American history. This was the last day, if you will, that the Emancipation Proclamation got to Texas two and a half years after it came in. And I'm not sure why I was thinking about this today as I was trimming my hedge, but also reflected, for some reason, in line with that what Martin Luther King said, and in line with what you have here, and I won't say it all, but I remember one phrase, he said, "The urgency is now." And so this is, it says, it's just the beginning, but it is urgent, and I encourage you, the task force, and all of us to consider the fact that it is urgency, and it is now.
Well, and I will mention too, I think it was just a year ago, we were sitting in our June board meeting, was it the June board meeting? It was a lot of, it was very energetic, there were a lot of concerns, and I'm really excited and thankful for the work that's been done around and diving into equity and the concerns that we have, not only in the school district, but within the community. So I'm excited that we're sitting here at this meeting with this proposed plan. Of course, it'll ebb and flow, but I'm very encouraged by that. So I want to thank you and the task force for all their work, and understanding that the urgency was now, and that was a year ago, and I think we've made incredible progress in my personal opinion. So those are my comments. Anybody else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris.
You want to vote?
Yep. I was just thanking you. May I have a motion to approve? Okay, oh, let's vote, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I vote aye, we pass. You guys are messing me up. All right, Chris, we have 10-1B National Equity Project Agreement.
So this is actually, the next few items are in tandem with the action plan. So this is a beginning-of-the-year agreement with the National Equity Project. We will probably be extending their services to us, but right now, we're talking to them about what that looks like before we can put a dollar amount in contract on it. So this is a contract for the beginning-of-the-year services that they'll provide in unconscious bias, systemic racism issues, et cetera, training for all of our staff in the district. So you're just approving the contract.
Okay.
So moved.
And a second? Any further discussion?
I moved it.
All right, seeing that there's no further discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. Healdsburg Charter School Revision.
So this one's, this is the kindergarten decision? Uh-huh.
Oh.
Oh, okay, on the action.
All right, that's okay. We have a, oh, Erin Myers. Erin, come on up.
Sorry, I tried the door that was locked the first time, and then I was like, oh no, am I in the wrong place? So, sorry, slightly flustered. But I'm here on behalf of the Equity Initiative Group, which are all scattered about in sundry for the summer, so I'm going to read a statement from us, and if I have a second at the end, I'll speak about myself, my own thoughts. "We at the Healdsburg Equity Initiative are grateful to the district, the board, the Equity Task Force, and the National Equity Project for all the hard work they have done this year towards ensuring more equitable outcomes for students in our school district. We are excited that the district is working on greater transparency, as well as for the biased training, professional development, and translation services. The working groups, moving towards one school, and celebrating diversity and messaging this in the community are crucial to thriving schools. We also hope that this action plan represents not merely a checklist, but an integrated strategy. We also want to thank both the superintendent and the board for their frank discussion last week, in which they stressed that we have a deficit mentality that pervades the school district at every level, and indeed, society as a whole. It may not always come from a place of malice, but it is based on the normative assumption that some students come to school complete, and some come with missing pieces, like English proficiency or literacy skills, rather than seeing students as coming in with different strengths and challenges from each other, and knowing that they can teach each other. We know that parents of English-only children are worried that too many English-language learner students in their child's class might mean that their child gets less attention and may not reach their full potential. And we know that it is harmful when a school limits bilingual students' access to components of the general curriculum until their English language is proficient. We appreciate that the board, the staff, and students will do a deep dive into this. We need to ensure that this process includes action plans for addressing and mitigating the impact of biases once they've been identified. While we absolutely support passing this action plan, we have two concerns, not about what's in it, but what's missing from it. For the last five years, elementary school students have been separated from each other, largely along home language lines, and been taught very different things in different ways. There is no reference in this plan to how the district plans to support the students who haven't had sufficient access to the rest of the curriculum, and also support students who have had limited class experience with their English-language learner peers. By the district's own admission, there have been times when even math has taken a second seat to English-language development at Healdsburg Elementary, let alone science and social studies. Therefore, it could be hard for a child to swim if thrown in the water with students who have not experienced such curricular exclusion. We have had an entire generation of students who have had experienced, who have experienced these inequities. So we are asking you to please pay attention to what kind of curricular, social, emotional, therapeutic, et cetera, supports can be put into place to help address their needs, especially in this time of transition, so that they may all enter high school prepared to thrive on an A-through-G track. Number two, there is also no detail in this document regarding the specifics of professional development for ELD and project-based learning, and I do see on here an agenda item that looks like you guys are hiring a consultant for English-language development, so I hope to hear more about that. Can I go really fast? Are teachers going to be getting more training on accelerated English strategies, which according to the district have not been totally tossed, only limited to 25 minutes per day, down from three hours? Accelerated English strategies are completely unsupported by research and are inherently subtractive. They devalue and exclude home language rather than creating bilingualism. We understand and respect that teachers and staff need to own the process of identifying professional development needs, and we're not asking the Equity Task Force to micromanage, but the fact that accelerated English was used for so long, despite the fact that the research is clear that this is not a good strategy for teaching English in the long run, leads us to wonder what the process is going to be in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. All right.
Okay, I just wanted to add that I would, you know, thank you, Erin, for the comments and the questions, and I would be more than happy to meet with the folks on the Equity Initiative to address some of those, so.
Likewise.
Where were we?
We are, you were talking about the Charter School Revision?
Charter School Revision, yeah. So this is, they're actually really, really minor revisions when you look at them in the document, but again, a very large change, and so what you would be voting on is revisions in the charter to make the charter effectively first through fifth grade for next year, and eliminate kindergarten from the charter school, therefore bringing all kindergartens under the Healdsburg Elementary School, so in line with the recommendation from the task force. And this was brought to the Charter Governing Council, was discussed, and, you know, very clearly, there's a commitment to project-based learning that will take place in all kindergarten classrooms, so the essence of a lot of the great things that happened on the charter will live on for all students in all classes. And so because of that, there wasn't a great deal of concern, and it was passed, so. So you have a recommendation from the task force and the Charter Governance Council for approval.
And you said last week that you made phone calls to all the incoming kindergartners explaining this.
Yeah.
Any interesting feedback, anything you'd want?
For the most part, they were very supportive. There's definitely some concerns, and folks that we're talking to, to try to alleviate those concerns, but nothing on a large scale, so, yeah.
That's a good question. I think I'd just encourage folks to follow up on those questions and answer, and answer, and answer, and ad infinitum, whatever questions they might have. Good communication. All right, may I have a motion to approve the recommendation from the Equity Task Force and the Charter Governance Council to approve the revised Healdsburg Charter School charter to only serve students first through fifth grades?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, yeah, for sure. Again, not expected, I didn't expect it to be here this year, right? That's exciting. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, passes. Moving on, North Bay Children's Center Memorandum of Understanding for Fitch Mountain Preschool.
Yeah, so we're excited, the MOU with North Bay Children's Center now includes third class, so we will have one class, that's two half-day classes, right? So an AM and a PM session, and then last year, we started a full-day class, and we were awarded a grant for this year to start an additional full-day class, and we actually are going to be funding the building of a very expensive toilet in the, an additional toilet in one of the classrooms. Because of licensing, when we add an additional toilet to the bathroom, we can have nine more students be involved, so we're working to get a timeline on that. It's going to take longer than we had hoped, but nonetheless, at some point, the, one of the full-day classes will have a capacity of 24 students from 15, which will be great. So this is an MOU for all three of those classes, for them to be our service provider, yeah.
And we expect all three of, well, the two full-day and the two half-days to be full?
For the most part, yeah. Maybe not full-full. The full days seem, there seems to be a lot of demand for the full day, the half-day a little bit less, so there may be a few empty seats in some of the half-day, but there are a lot of people who prefer the half-day also, so.
So there's a need for both?
There's a need for both, yeah.
Okay.
So it's a lot of, it's a very positive move, yeah.
And do we know if, I mean, is this pretty much serving, I know we did some analysis a few years ago about how many preschool kids are in our district, and do, are they, do they have access to preschool services, and do we feel like we're at 100% now, that we have the services if parents choose?
We will know that in the fall. We screen parents coming into kindergarten to see where our students are. Yeah, so I don't have, you know, last year, actually, last year's kindergarten class was somewhat lower than it had been in years past.
Yeah, a lot lower.
Yeah. The, we'll get new data this year, and we'll see. And we follow up, we have, actually Erin's assistant in the district office calls all the families to ask why.
Yeah, we saw a new wrinkle this past year. We had 17 students without any preschool, formerly it was nine to 12.
I think.
Yeah, so the new, not only more, but the new wrinkle was lack of transportation that had never come up before, ever, in all the three years that we've been calling every family, and so that's an interesting conundrum. So we're working with other community organizations, but we had, I can't remember, it was three or four families tell us the reason that they weren't getting their child to preschool was lack of transportation, which we had not heard previously.
Yeah, because I mean, that's our goal, right? It's 100%, that you have access to preschool. Every child in Healdsburg should have access to early preschool. So yeah, if that's an issue, we want to keep an eye on that and see how, if maybe we can work with someone in the community to address that? Okay.
There's a lot of work going on around early childhood education in the community through the Healthcare Foundation right now, so there's a lot of ongoing conversations. Erin and I both attended a meeting, I don't remember the name of the foundation, but it was a foundation out of Baltimore, that did a lot of work around trauma and basically child attachment to parents, and how to teach that in households where it's not actually kind of just happening naturally, so counseling services and things like that. So a lot of positive energy, and when we find obstacles such as transportation, I do think that there will be people that can help if we find that to need, so.
All right, thank you, Chris. May I please have a motion to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between Healdsburg Unified School District and North Bay Children's Center for the Oversight of Fitch Mountain Preschool for 1920 school year? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, motion carries. Everyday math, Everyday Mathematics Math Adoption.
So the next step to changing the charter is to change the curriculum. So we are going to have one kindergarten program, which means we want to have alignment in our curriculum for all of our students. Healdsburg Elementary School, as it said in your cover, had previously been using GoMath. We have not found GoMath to be adequate, and so we are going to make sure that all three of our kindergarten classes have the Everyday Mathematics, which is the core adopted curriculum that we've been using in charter. It went through, did a two-year pilot, this is all outlined in your cover sheet. It's a fairly low cost, $2,500, $2,571. That'll get us through the next three years. So when we adopted Everyday Math, we did a six-year adoption. Next year will be the third year, so this is a three-year adoption, or next year will be the fourth year, third, three-year adoption, so it'll be in line with all the other classes. So it's a little less expensive, and we're able to negotiate with McGraw-Hill, who provides a curriculum for a reduced rate. So this will provide all the bells and whistles, manipulatives, games kit, everything that we need in order to make that third kindergarten classroom have the math curriculum. ELA curriculum has been the same between HES School and Healdsburg Charter, so no need to buy additional English-language arts curriculum. We're in the process right now of updating Social Science and Science, and so those will go the same. So this is the one difference here between the two in the kindergarten year. So the cost to the district is $2,571. That'll get us everything we need for the next three years.
Great. Maybe with the, was there training? Was there training?
There's, there's one day of gratis training. Our...
One teacher who's...
Yeah, one teacher, and she's been kind of following along, and the two other kindergarten teachers are really ready to help her out, so we're not super worried. As you all know, we have major transitions going on with our math curriculum as-is, but we, you know, we wanted to provide that core, we want that solid, here's your, you know, all your materials, all the games, and then we're wrapping the Joe Bowler Navigator materials kind of around that core curriculum that we already own. So we'll have one day of gratis onsite, and then we'll see what we need from there, yeah.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the adoption of Everyday Mathematics for the kindergarten program at Healdsburg Elementary School?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, great.
Delighted.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. All right, item 10-1F, Differentiated Assistance. Diane and Bill? Hello?
Unfortunately, Bill is taking care of his wife, who had surgery last week, and there was a caregiver helping who got sick, so Bill got called in today, couldn't be here, so.
Diane and Chris then.
Yeah.
Great, that's right, we're the dynamic duo. I love it. So we were talking about differentiated assistance. In the board packet, I gave you a little bit of backup, so I don't have to go into the detail about what, can you hear me? What differentiated assistance is, so I'll try to move through my slides pretty quickly and get to what really matters, the work that the sites are doing. Maybe I'll do that. Can you hit this thing? It doesn't work. There we go. So basically, the takeaway is differentiated assistance is the new program improvement. It's what, it's based on the dashboard data, and it's what is in place for sort of at a tier-two level, thinking about various tiers of support, for districts who do not meet improvement or progress in more than one state priority, and there are seven state priorities, maybe eight, like an Erin, she's the dashboard genius over there, for one or more student groups. So if we're looking at one or more straight state priorities, the priorities that we did not do well in are academic achievement for ELA and math, as well as the school climate indicator, which is suspension data, for the two student groups, so students with disabilities and English learners. So we are working, we decided, as part of the differentiated assistance work, to really, but we felt like Erin had, and Erin and I were working on students with disabilities, and many things were in the LCAP to help both students with disabilities and English learners with relationship to academic performance. One thing we hadn't really delved into yet was our suspension rate and data, and what we're doing to help support our students who are struggling in that area. So we decided our work with SCO would mostly focus on Priority Six, which is school climate as measured by suspension rate. Any questions so far? So we met three times, and we had, we really dived into this, it was different kinds of work. It wasn't the compliance sort of focused program improvement as in years past, but it was really looking at a lot of data, trends, root cause analysis, trying to make correlations, all the while trying to avoid what we do best, which is go straight to a solution, and being okay with not knowing the solution, but trying to create a change plan, which is really what SCO helped us with, and Chris participated, and Erin participated, the junior high staff, high school staff, various members, and kind of, we looked at the data, we analyzed the data, and we said, okay, what can we do? What I'm bringing forward to you tonight, broken down to the junior high and the high school level, is ARIE's data, as I can pull from ARIE's relative today, to sort of, kind of get a temperature on where we might be next year, or how it's going to look at the end of this year compared to where, what this data is based on, which is the end of last year. But I want you to know, it does not take into account something called cumulative enrollment, which doesn't get pulled until July, essentially, it gets certified in August, so I won't know the real measure. We think we're going to look better next year. We think, you know, overall, our data's going to look a lot better, even though it may not look as great as we want it to on these slides. I can only use the data that's available to me now, and we just don't have the cumulative enrollment data. Does that make sense? Okay, great. So we're going to start with the junior high.
All right, so again, not looking at cumulative data, I've been, this is part of the type of work I did in my previous role, and so I think these numbers are not going to be truly reflective of what they will come out to be in the dashboard in the fall. But just looking at the raw data right now, we appear to be up five students suspended and a few more days. However, the causes for those suspensions have changed a little bit, where this year, our number one was willful use of violence and threatening and attempting violence. So that's been something that's been a little bit different. We are lower in our 48900K, which are things related to defiance and disruption of school activities.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So that's number of students, that's not number of occurrences?
Correct. So when you look at, the way it is calculated in the dashboard, is the number of students who were suspended in your school divided by the number of students who were enrolled for at least one day in your school. Last, last year's rate, or this, you know, the rate that came out in this year's dashboard for last year's data was 11.3%, which you guys have seen that figure earlier in the year. Based on my analysis of the information, I believe we will be at just over 10% next year, so down slightly, not as far down as we would like to be, but down a little over a percent.
So the number of students increased, but it sounds like our cumulative attendance also maybe increased, and so it brings the percentage down?
Right, yeah. And also bears saying, like, you look at those reasons for suspension, right? If you don't know the ed code, they're jarring.
Yes.
And there are only so many things we can suspend for, and they are very specifically worded in Education Code 48900, and so those are the legalese that, you know, the reasons why we suspend. And so obviously, willful use of violence upon the person, another person, you know, it's...
Like starting a fight?
Yeah, or it could be simple as a push, you know, but it depends on the issue, and we can only classify them in certain things, right? And so don't read it like you would read it on the nightly news, I guess is what I'm trying to say, so.
Yeah, and I would say of the, of the suspension codes, probably the one that is used and has gotten a lot of districts in hot water, and I'm glad that it's not in our top anymore, is 48900K. It's something that you're not even allowed to suspend for below third grade. It's something that you're not even allowed to suspend for below third grade.
Yeah. So, that's the disrupted school activities.
Oh, right, right. Just being disruptive, basically. Right.
So, disruption disrespect.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
So, there are a few things that we are doing straight away to begin addressing this. And I will say that one important step is looking at just being consistent with student behavior expectations. We came in and addressed that. It was a big push of what we did last year and something that we looked at in our Team HJH days. If you think about the rising ninth graders who were, who just finished eighth grade with us, they have had a different principal each of their three years at Hillsburg Junior High School. And although I believe each of the principals prior to me were great, the difference in student expectations and just how discipline may be applied makes it maybe a little bit difficult for students to really know what those expectations are. So, I think the more consistency that we have going forward, we will continue to see our suspension rates decline. We also began implementing some positive behavior interventions and support. A couple of things that that looked like included positive reinforcement that was specific and timely. We also sent positive postcards home to parents, and we reminded students of our behavior expectations, which are on a matrix that we call the HJH Way. I stole one of Erin Fender's lines here for what we are planning to do next, which is this nest of understanding and support around things, including trauma-informed practices, implicit and unconscious bias, social-emotional learning, and restorative practices. Important that we revisit those. You know, we've gone through some restorative practice work in the past few years. However, eight of our 18 full-time teachers next year will be new to us, and this is coming off a year where we had four or five new teachers from last year. So, the majority of our staff will be new, having not gone through this training in this district before. So, important to continue to look at those areas, and I know we certainly have intentionality around doing that. Another thing that we looked at were, and will continue to look at, are alternatives to suspension. We want to continue to refine our practices around the defiance disrespect, or 48900K codes. And one of the things that we came in and there wasn't a clear plan for was the vaping issue. I walked in and we did not have, you know, we didn't have a clear idea of what do we do when a student is caught vaping, or selling a vape, or in possession of a vape pen. So, one of the things that we talked about and were able to implement in the second semester was utilizing the Tobacco Prevention Toolkit, which is a curriculum out of Stanford University. It's actually the one that SCO recommends as well. And we've provided an alternative to suspension for their first vaping offense, which includes education, as well as, you know, lesser consequences such as lunch detentions and after-school detentions, things of that nature. And then, again, I think maintaining a consistent leadership team at the site, as well as within our district of just talking about what we're doing and having that sort of institutional knowledge and build that will continue to help us decrease our suspension rate.
Picture Bill up here. He's going to be, he would be probably a lot more eloquent than I could be about what they're doing at the high school, although I did email him and ask him, you know, some specific questions about what we're seeing. So, I think, based on the numbers that, again, that we're pulling from ARIE's, we are seeing an approximate 12% decline in the number of individual students suspended, so that's good news. And I think what's the, what was the most startling to me is the total number of days suspended are actually cut in half. So, that tells me that even though he still is seeing some of the same issues, he's suspending maybe for one day this time, and that just bodes well for the students. We know that suspension doesn't work. It's not a punishment that has proven successful. Sometimes it's the tool in your toolbox, but I think he's using it pretty sparingly, those number of days. So, that was good news. And then, I think I need you, Steve. So, again, much like the junior high, some of the focus, again, will be on trauma-informed approaches, restorative practices. They are doing restorative circles, and so, and they're trying to encourage more teachers to be proactive about restorative circles in their classroom. And they're, they plan on, they have Connie Marx, who's trained in restorative practices, so she's going to be rolling that out to more staff members next year. Not suspending as much for the vape, the possession, or the ownership of a device, and instead, we've been leveraging our relationship with HPD and the Juvenile Diversion Program, Luigi, if you know him. He's very popular with our students and staff. And we've, instead of suspension, we've been going through a diversion program. We hope to do more partnership with them next year. Also, one thing I wanted to mention, but it's not solidified yet, is we've gone out for a big grant that's around tobacco use and prevention. And so, we're hoping that we get it. We won't know until early fall, but if so, that will provide a lot of resources for us, a lot of training for parents and staff. Ninth and 11th grade seminar, they do a whole curriculum around vape awareness. That is the number-one reason why students are suspended. And I've already mentioned HPD and SOS. Bill wanted me to say that you may ask, oh, and it's more nicotine for them, it's more nicotine actually than marijuana at the high school. That might be interesting for you to know. And then, he said if they ask about the vape users, it spans nine through 12, Latino, Anglo, UCLA-bound, not college-bound, it doesn't matter. I mean, across the board, that's what we see. So, we know clearly that it's a problem. It's a problem, you know, throughout the nation, so not unique to us. Do you have any questions?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. It seems like there's kind of slightly different strategies for the junior high and the high school. I mean, obviously, a lot of overlap between the restorative interventions and trauma-informed care and the nesting. Is that intentional? Do you feel like the need at the junior high is, well, I mean, the kids are different, but like, I mean, Bill's not here, but maybe.
Well, we also tap into Luigi and his services. We don't have SOS accessible at the junior high school. So, we went out and just decided on our own that we were going to figure out something and come up with something to be able to provide in this particular realm around vape Other than that, I think our approaches are similar, but we have slightly different, you know, the vaping is a concern certainly at the junior high school. It's not our number-one or number-two reason for suspension. We have students who are hitting each other and assaulting each other that we are trying to address, which is our number-one concern, and also, you know, concern that parents have. So, we're trying to change that and hopefully change our, you know, the reputation that exists with us, with some members of our community.
And maybe it's just because of the way the presentation's, right, but it appears that the high school's a little more focused on the restorative circles kind of approach, or is that something you're also using at the junior high?
We're utilizing it. Admin and counselor at the junior high school probably utilize it more than in the classroom. And simply put, most of our teachers at this point are not trained on restorative practices in the classroom. That's just a reality. And there was some resistance from some staff members when that, when that practice was first put into place in this district, and I think we are seeing some positive changes in that regard with some of our people who are no longer going to be with the district.
So, because to me, it seems like it would be, I mean, we talked about consistency in what students can expect related to other areas, related to, I can't even remember now exactly, we were talking about this earlier, just, you know, a K-12 continuity. And it seems like it would be in our best interest to be using the same techniques at the junior high and the high school, so that these kids know where their limits are and what to expect, and where the guidelines are, and when they've broken them, what's going to happen, and it isn't going to be radically different, easier or harder in different grades and different schools. So-
And I think that's where we're going. I think, like Chris said, you know, a lot of it has to do with stability of leadership at the site. Certainly, staff buy-in and actually using those practices has a lot to do with it, and it is much farther along at the high school than it currently is at the junior high. That said, we are there, we are going to provide the training, they will be using it. They're just not as far along for those reasons. So, yeah.
There's also a greater need at the junior high.
I believe. At the junior high, there's so much more social-emotional need, I think, than at the high school, just because they're just, you know? Yeah. It's that age group, and, you know, so many challenges that they have, they're going through. Is there a social-emotional component? I know that they, we do toolbox at the elementary level, but that kind of gets fizzled at by the middle school, just because it's not really appropriate to, you know, use your toolbox there. But, is there something else, like, I don't know.
We don't have a set curriculum that we utilize regularly. There is a curriculum that is approved and that goes through the middle school. I've previously found it to be less effective at the middle school level. It's called Second Step. It works very well at the elementary level, and it's a little bit too elementary to use at the middle school level. I don't think you have students who buy into it. I would say that our school counselor is pretty well-versed in dealing with the social-emotional side of things. She, you know, we've been trying to balance, how do we incorporate more academic counseling? And we find that the need, as Adesela expressed, there's so much need for the social-emotional counseling and supports, that it becomes difficult to provide both of those adequately.
And there is, there are programs like Team HJH Days, where you do a lot of team building, building community, which you brought back this year.
Right.
We also have the Squad Program that Bethany and a number of teachers put together, sort of Safe School Ambassadors-like, where there are student leaders, taught certain strategies on positive interaction with students, and to intervene on other students' behalf, et cetera. So, there are things going on. There's not a set, I see, old curriculum per se. Like Chris said, I actually taught Second Step in the junior high setting, and I would agree with your, with your assessment of it, so.
So, we do have, we do have some outside counseling that comes in with side-by-side. We have a counselor, Audrey, can't remember her last name, Audrey. She's great. And we've also been providing counseling groups with the Youth Thrive Group, and they have a great counselor there who comes in, former football player, is able to connect really well with many different students. I would say very well with some of our more challenging boys. And we received a grant from Healthcare Foundation to continue to provide some of those services. So, we found, we're finding ways outside of a canned sort of curriculum to provide opportunities, especially for our students in greatest need.
There are a lot of counseling opportunities at the junior, more than you'd see, I think, at most junior highs. Yeah.
Well, anything we can do to support the professional development around this, you know? Let us know.
Will do.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on. Item G, U-Cubed at Stanford University Memorandum of Understanding, Ms. Erin Bender. Oh, is this for now or later?
Uh, H.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I got my shirt on.
I see that. Very nice.
That'll take off, yeah.
Campus cool again, summer math camp.
That's right. So, I'm so pleased in such a quick, you know, short amount of time, really six months, from when Principal Erica McGuire gave a presentation with Erin Basida about the work that we've been doing based on Mathematical Mindsets, which is a book that was written by Professor Joe Bowler from Stanford. And, you know, that then set off a series of conversations that's somewhat outlined in your cover sheet there. We are deep into what is in this MOU. We're actually going forward on a lot of this. There is some cost to this, but so far, the cost hasn't hit. So, yeah, so everything we've gotten so far from Stanford has been, you know, either professional development, we've sent them, or been at no cost to the district. So, our teachers who are going to be teaching U-Cubed have been taking an online course. They've provided webinars for our teachers, they've provided curriculum, these t-shirts that all of our kids and all of our teachers will get. We're really excited for our rising first through eighth graders to experience a different way of learning and understanding math during three weeks in July. So, that's a big lift, right? This math camp in three weeks that'll launch July 22nd. But, there's lots of other stuff in this MOU and formalizing a partnership. There will be 300 math camps using the U-Cubed curriculum happening all over the world. We are one of 30 sites that's part of an international research study. So, there's a school in the far north Yukon, there's one in Hawaii, there's us, there's a camp in Scotland. So, 30 of the 300 camps are part of an international research study. So, all of our fifth through eighth graders already took a pre-test, four Mars tasks. So, every fifth through eighth grader was pre-tested before the end of the school year with a Mars task, with four Mars tasks. The kids who are in camp will do another pre- and post-assessment, and then we'll post-assess all of our kids who are in sixth through ninth grade again. So, we're going to try to see, what Stanford's going to help us see is, what impact did three weeks of U-Cubed Math Camp have on our students' achievement? And where? You know, what kind of learning and growth did they see? So, that's exciting, and, you know, I can't thank our administrators, our teachers enough. It was, you know, the ramp up to get ready for this summer camp was pretty amazing. We're still getting some of our middle schoolers to commit, so we still have some room for the middle school-age students. And, you know, I think it's one of those things, like, if you're coming into sixth, seventh, eighth grade, math camp maybe might not sound super fun, but we're hoping, once we have it, and we create a buzz about it, that this is something that we could look at doing. Dr. Bowler's about to drop another book September 3rd. It will be published. It's taking the ideas of mathematical mindsets and broadening them a little bit more for a wider audience, not just about math. She'll be in NAPA through NAPA Learns, doing a parent engagement and a book signing. And we have a verbal commitment from Dr. Bowler to come do a parent night with us in October or November, again, based on her new book and this work. So, we're really excited. Dr. Bowler's somebody who garners $14,000 a day. That's pretty much her daily rate when she comes and speaks and does international engagements. But, they're really excited about working with Hillsburg and the change that we've already done, and seeing that we're ready to move fast, we're flexible, we're a K-12 system. So, really excited to formalize this partnership with U-Cubed at Stanford and Dr. Bowler and her team. Any questions? Anything you're wondering about?
The math camp, is it open to whomever within the age groups that you've specified?
We did targeted invites. We're trying to create a heterogeneous grouping of students, and we're also doing multi-age classrooms. So, the incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, there'll be two classrooms taught by Gloria Hurtado and Robin Doherty, with sixth, seventh, and eighth all together. Heterogeneous classrooms, we were coached by Dr. Bowler in order to, you know, highlight what you would see in a normal classroom. I will say that there are more students that were invited that are just below grade level. So, of the, let's say, 30 students that were invited at the middle school level, the majority are just below grade level. Then, we've got a handful who are performing above grade level based on CAS, STAR scores, grades, and then a few that are, we're very worried about, that may be one to two even more years behind. So, we've hand-selected, we have had some parents come in and say, you know, can I get a spot? And, you know, we kind of take a look at the data, who else is enrolled, and what we're doing, but we've started with hand-selection in order to get a heterogeneous grouping.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will you send an email with just the dates, when we can pop in and take a look?
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's the three weeks right before school starts, 13 days of learning, so it'll start July 22nd, goes from 9:00 to noon every day over at the Fitch Mountain Campus. So, there'll be eight classrooms running. I would say anytime. I would say anytime, really. Come see what we're doing.
And do we get T-shirts?
Maybe. If you come.
If I come.
If we come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just need to know what the, where the bar is set. No, this is very, 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 very exciting.
I have a quick question on parent outreach. Just how will you be outreach into the Hispanic parents?
Uh, you know, as we have, but hopefully better. You know, we translate all of our documents, we make personal phone calls, everything's translated. Dr. Bowler is not bilingual nor bicultural herself, but is very familiar in working with communities where there are, you know, students are bilingual, families are bilingual, or even monolingual. So, you know, I, we'll see. You know, we don't have the plan just yet, but the parent information sessions are something that's important to us and I, you know, it's something that I've had conversations about is, it's, it's one thing for me to say it, for a principal to say it, to a teacher to say it, but I think when we get the experts in the room, that this is their life, this is what they study, this is all they study, and they communicate that to our families, that it, it adds a certain level of importance to the information that's being provided.
I just wanted us to be mindful of that, and this is what I hear from the community is, you know, I'm not sure we need to do a better job, or the parents need to do a better job, but we need to do a better coming together, I think, for both, both sides, if you will.
It's worth noting that Dr. Bowler has a very strong equity lens. I mean, the bulk of her work is around creating equitable outcomes in mathematics education. So she's, you know, A, it's a priority for us, and B, if it wasn't, she would be all over us and we wouldn't be working with her. So that is a big, a big focus for her.
And will you send us the dates, you know, just, you know, because, you know, my mind only works one week at a time.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's super exciting, Erin, thank you.
Yeah, so we're asking for you to approve this MOU tonight?
Yes.
May I ask for a motion to approve the memorandum, the MOU between U-Cubed and Stan, at Stanford University and Healdsburg Unified School District for Support of Mathematics Achievement?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? All right.
Very exciting.
Whatever we can do to make math camp cool, you just let us know.
Right, okay.
All right, great, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to Item H.
All right, so this is actually more of a long-term plan. So, you know, as it says in the cover sheet, four years ago, a team of elementary students, or students, teachers, pardon me, team of elementary teachers, the elementary principals at the time, and myself, set out to find the highest performing schools that had a similar demographic. My history prior to coming to HUSD was in the secondary space. I was a high school teacher, a high school administrator. When I worked for UC Berkeley, it was mostly with secondary schools. So I did a lot of Googling of highest performing elementary schools, best elementary schools, and a lot of learning. I do have a child, I'm married to a school psychologist that served in elementary for over 20 years, so I get some, you know, learning at home, but I, I needed to learn and I needed to understand better what we can do in order to make sure that all of our students at the Healdsburg, at the Healdsburg Elementary Schools get everything they need. So we set out, we visited about 10 schools over a six-month period. As far south, this was about as far south as we went, as Hollister and Gilroy, all the way through locally as well. And what we saw at Navigator, both in person when we visited and the data that they continue to show, really was impressive. As they, they show in this MOU, they've essentially closed the achievement gap between low socioeconomic students, English language learners. And so we will not be replicating their model. They do things a little differently than we do, but we've borrowed a lot of what they do. And, you know, whenever I go on school sites like this, at some point I like to ask, so what's your special sauce? What's the thing, right? If we only implement one or two things that you do, what is it? And that's what you're going to see represented in this MOU. So really, it's about changing the culture of how the principal interacts and manages the building. It's very data-driven, it's principal as coach, principal using and working with their teacher leaders and using observation and feedback in a nonevaliative way. And so that it's not a surprise when a principal comes in, it's not a surprise when data is used both formally and informally. And so what we are going to do here is formalize our partnership with Navigator. They have been amazing partners over the last three years. They've hosted, almost every single Healdsburg Elementary teacher has been on one of their two campuses. Our principals have all been there. They have brought their people up to us at cost of just us paying for their hotel rooms and food, with, with no cost for the professional development. They've given us all their math curriculum that they have produced themselves, where they've got 70 to 80% of their kids meeting or exceeding standard and serve more low SES kids than we do. But it's time to formalize a partnership, partly because the work is a lot of what we're doing, and also because they got a grant, and they have another grant out there. So they came to me about mid-year and said, we're writing this grant and we want to write Healdsburg into it in order to provide services to your principals and to your schools. They have a second grant pending that will hopefully make this a no-cost obligation to, to us. And so we are, right now, going to be getting three days of leadership training and three days of instructional training, and then lots of virtual and other types of support with, with running reports and looking at data. It's all outlined in the MOU. Let me see if there's anything I wanted to highlight beyond that. Oh, field questions?
A quick question on, you said leadership training, is that administrators or is that?
Yeah, it's mostly Jeff and Erica. And they've already been in contact with Heather, who is from Navigator and is going to be helping us. She's our point at Navigator, name's Heather Parsons. They've already had a preliminary phone conversation and have some dates set. So it'll probably, primarily be for our two elementary school principals and, and me to some degree as well.
And then I see three days for staff training as well?
Yep.
Yeah.
And staff includes classified, it's in the classroom or?
It includes our paraprofessionals, yes. And that's something that we've learned from Navigator, is they take great pride, they call them their small group instructors. When you go visit their school, one of the things they say to you as you enter the classroom is, try to figure out who the teacher is. Got two adults in here. And they have an amazing model of growing their paraprofessionals into high-level teaching instructors, and that they will be a part of this.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Are you doing any things as a part of the program?
A little bit of both. So they try to do job embedded, so there may be some release time in the morning and then you go and you put it into practice. Yeah. So it's not us going down there, it's them coming to us, and the, the job embedded piece is really important. So you're working with the kids and seeing the training in action. Yeah.
We do have a public comment, so.
Sure.
Erin Myers.
Hello again.
Hello.
So as you guys are thinking of approving this relationship with Navigator School and professional development and support, I just am hoping that you guys are asking lots of questions and that you feel like it's very clear to you that this is the program that we want as a community and that your community is informed and understands what the changes are going to mean to us and to our students. I hope that you guys all understand which parts are being pulled out and are really looking, I heard you guys talking about it before, continuity, cohesion. How is this going to be part of a cohesive K through five, especially if we're moving towards a one-school system? Like, how does the project-based learning, is it, is it coming from Navigator? Are we adding that in? How, how does everyday math and U-Cubed all come together with these Navigator components? And so I'm just really asking for you, before you sort of pass things that look like great on paper, like this is the special sauce, just to please really look at the vision or the cohesive curriculum, and that, to me, goes all the way K through 12. But I just, of course, anytime you take bits and pieces of a program and, basically, we're kind of making our own special sauce, just really want the parents to understand what you guys' vision is as far as cohesion and continuity. I love the idea of the more, more paraprofessionals, you guys all know how I feel about that. But I, I think, hopefully, if we're doing this sort of thing, you guys are thinking of kind of all hands on deck, maybe not long-term, but at least short-term, of really looking at how this transition is going to look and be cohesive, and how we're going to have all hands on deck, and really trying to not just grab the next thing that looks like it might be a solution to a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Erin, did you have anything you wanted to add before we move on and vote on this?
Yeah, you know, I, I appreciate the sentiment and the concerns, and I can see why it, it might look piecemeal. And, you know, the, the big thing you learn in education is that there are some things that are replicable in some communities and some that aren't, and that we need to make it our own. And, you know, I'll speak to, one of the things that we have brought to Navigator in this two-way relationship is questioning them about the, the inquiry that their students are doing, and that they are very good at the station rotation, they are very good at using adaptive software, they are very good at training their paraprofessionals and using data and form instruction. They will say they're not as good at inquiry-based learning and projects, and that's something that we have brought to them and question will remain a part of what we do. And I feel very confident with the staff that we have. And our, you know, our educators are a part of this, they, they're making the visits, they're part of the decision-making. What can they bring in, what they can't, what, what fits into the Healdsburg puzzle pieces in order to make it work for our community? But, you know, I, I get it, this has been a four-year relationship. We're taking the pieces and parts that work for us and maintaining some of the things that are unique and special to us at the same time.
Thank you, Erin.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the MOU with Navigator Schools for Professional Development and Ongoing Support. I'll make the motion to approve for the second. All right, I would like to comment during discussion is I have extreme confidence in you, Erin, and the way that you dive deep into decisions and proposals that you make. This has been years in the making, and I really appreciate the fact that you've looked and re-looked and taken folks to go, I've gone, and then finally come to a decision where it's very informed. And again, we've tasked the district with some serious challenge, facing some challenges with our math, and we want to see results, and I really appreciate the way that you are going out and looking for multiple ways to address this issue, issue. I think it's fabulous. So I, I want to express my support for that.
Absolutely. I think it takes a variety of methods to meet the needs that our students have, so I thank you for doing that, not just a, here's a box, open the box and this is what's going to work. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments?
So when I think about this, I think about the IDT, not inner district transfers, the math IDT.
Innovation Design Team.
And, and what has been laid out with that work? And I've had the pleasure for several years now volunteering in math class. And so if I'm clear, everyday math is our basic math curriculum. Teachers are using Joe Bowler's.
Mindset.
Mindset work in the classroom. It's not, it's not necessarily a curriculum, it's more, it is a mindset, it's a.
It's a paradigm.
It's how, how kids look at themselves and experience their learning. And I, one of my jobs this last year was a lot of the Navigator case.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so I guess what I want to say is that, that we have a curriculum, per se. What we get from Navigator and what we're getting from Joe Bowler, you want to call him a paradigm or whatever, but it's the other part of curriculum. So it is not just.
Right, there's the instruction piece, right? My title's Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Instruction. And so, so I just wanted to clarify.
It's instructional strategies is really what Navigator gives us.
Right.
How do you implement the curriculum? Right.
And my experience, my personal experience in teaching mathematics at the elementary level, both primary and intermediate, was that what you need, it's nice to have a basic curriculum, but what you need is a multitude of strategies because every class is different, every student is different, and you have to approach things in a multitude of ways. And you have to have those strategies. So what, to me, Navigator is bringing to us, and Joe Bowler is bringing to us, is that strategy. Your tool, it's your own personal teacher's toolkit that you have to have and go, this is what's going to do it. So, thank you.
And thank you for your volunteerism in the classroom, Judy. I know you've spent a lot of time, you, you know what's happening in our classrooms day to day, and I really appreciate that. You see it in action, you're talking with our kids, you're talking with our educators.
I have a question though about, like, how will we measure, what will be the matrix used to, you know, whether, to identify, is it the program that's making a difference? Is it the strategies? Is it all of it? I mean.
Right.
How are we, I mean, because we don't want to continue with something that's not.
Right.
Giving us the bang for our buck.
Right, exactly. So one of the things that Navigator helps us with is that assessment piece and the common assessment piece. There's a weekly quiz that's given that's based on the standard that's being taught that week. So that's one piece, right? Very formative, it's a quick hitter, it's anywhere from two to four questions. There's, there's that, but also we are doing the problem of the month, and it's a school-wide problem of the month. So Erica can speak to this. We take a Joe Bowler task, all of the third through fifth graders tackle the same task. The work is made public, you may have seen it in the hallways. The students do a gallery walk, so our third graders can see, how did the fifth graders figure out how many pennies? There's this really interesting penny one that stumped a lot of us and a lot of our kids. So there, there is conversation that happens, and then we worked with SCO to do a UDL walk. So we looked at that work based on Universal Design for Learning. So there's this aspect of, we're all using the same task, and what are we learning and how are we teaching from that? There's the STAR assessments that we give now quarterly, we give at the beginning of the year, right before T1, end of T1, T3, T2, and the end of T3. So the STAR assessments as well is part of it. We are currently, and this is the work that some of our, that our principals will dive into, is what are the assessments that we give? Why do we give them? And how are they used? Are they used to report on the standards-based report card? Are they used to make changes in instruction? You know, we all know that educational research, there's no way to take out all the various, there's no way to control for one thing and say, it's this. You know, when I was at UC Berkeley, we got asked this question a lot, and we would say, often it's the sum of their parts. But there is also at times to say, these are the one or two things that are making the key difference. I think when you ask our teachers why we saw some of the gains that we did in CASP in grades three, four, and five, what, what was the difference for them? I think a lot of them will say, I deeply know the standards, I better understand math myself, that's one piece of it. I think that's one thing that Navigator has brought to us, is unpacking the standards. The other is this mindset shift, in that we are deeply believing that our kids can do this, all of our kids can do it, and we will get them there. So I feel like we've got some assessments out there, we need to get better at using them, and we need to make sure that we're using them at the right points in time in our inform instruction.
And as Erin said, we have, I mean, it's not public data yet, it won't be till August or September, but the CASP scores at the school in math have dramatically risen. And so we have outcome data to support what we're doing. And I'm excited to get more into depth and see our students go even farther, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that what I like, what I see, is a process. It's not just a, a one-off. It's we go, we look, I mean, whether it's this or Joe Bowler or whatever, we continually, we look, we implement, we assess, we refine, we look. we look, we implement, we assess, we refine, we look, we implement, we assess, and we'll look and see what else there is.
Yeah.
You know, if we're not, all our kids aren't at 100%, well, what else do we need to do? And I really appreciate that because it's about process. Sometimes we know about relationships, we know about outcomes, but if we continually remind ourselves that there is a process, I think it's great. And you're doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. And, you know, I have to give the credit to our teachers who are
They're amazing.
in it. You know, they are working hard. They are thinking hard. They are thinking together. The collaborative spirit that's going on right now on our campuses, particularly around mathematics and, you know, we're cheerleading them and, but they are working their tails off right now and thinking deeply about this as individuals, as individual teachers, as grade level, as a building, as a K-12 system.
I'd also say Erica has displayed a lot of leadership in this area and really embraced the Navigator approach as a coach and it permeates what's done at FMC and every classroom now as a result. So, thank you, Erica.
Okay, so
We're ready to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. We have our second and we're going to vote. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposition? All right, aye vote aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. And then the next one we have is item I, online courses for Healdsburg High School.
So if it's really organized, I put on a tie and be Bill. So I'm being Bill right now. If Bill wasn't home nursing his wife and a sick caregiver, he would be giving this presentation. These are the revised course lists for the online learning program that we use for our credit recovery, Marcy Basera Academy, and also for our Center for Independent Studies. There are not major changes here. We're refining a little bit as we move to integrated math. So an example is that you'll see on credit recovery, on the list, we still have Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry. We get kids who come to us from other places where they're still taking Algebra I, Algebra II, and they need to credit recover on that. But you'll see on Marcy Basera, we, you know, we start to make some changes here in our new graduation requirements and what is available. So the not major changes, some in the math, making sure IM3 is on there, making sure financial math or what we call financial algebra, Plato calls it financial math. Some of the science has changed due to the UC recommendations of, that some of the Plato classes that had been UC-approved are no longer. So that's getting to be a smaller number of courses. In the career technical ed, I think it's worth saying that we try very hard to make sure that our classroom-based career technical ed is not usurped by what kids can do online and that you'll see a hospitality course here online that complements our culinary program. But we wouldn't offer culinary as an online program, A, because how do you do that online, but B, we have a robust culinary program. You're not going to see media classes on here. So we're not taking away particularly for our career technical ed from the richness that kids can get in the classroom. So, questions?
I liked it.
Do we have a general idea of how many students are taking these courses just for whatever reason?
Well, so for credit recovery, the only, I shouldn't say the only, most students are taking this because they got an F.
Yep.
They failed second semester 10th grade English and they need to retake it. And some of them are doing it in summer school. Some of them do it during the school year. We do have a handful of students and we encourage students to do credit recovery for grade improvement. So let's say they got a D, D-, and they really want to go to a four-year university. A D, D- doesn't cut it when you're applying to a four-year university. So they can take the credit recovery courses for grade improvement. We have currently 26 kids signed up on each of our summer school programs. So we have a Monday, Wednesday, summer school program going and a Tuesday, Thursday, and then a drop-in on Friday. So we have about 25, 26 kids in both of those who are serving 50 students right now.
Wow.
It is a lot, you know, and some of them are double booked because they failed ninth grade English and 10th grade chemistry. So they're taking ninth grade English on Monday, Wednesday, and taking chemistry on Tuesday, Thursday. So that's credit recovery. Marcy Basera, we serve anywhere from 12 to 14, up to 22, 23 students in Marcy Basera. It is a growing population. So we have more students in the Marcy Basera Academy than we have had previously. Yeah, that's a whole nother presentation.
Yeah, I was going to say, that sounds like an update we need to have.
Yeah. A little bit has to do with the changing dynamics. We're serving more foster youth. High school grad- graduation requirements going up, serving more low-income students. So we've got, it's a lot of moving parts here because we've been asking, why is that going up? Center for Independent Studies, we cap right at about 10 to 15. We have a kind of an enrollment agreement to some extent due to ADA for that. So Center for Independent Studies tends to be students who need some options due to healthcare situation. They may have high levels of anxiety and so they need to have a modified schedule. Every now and then we get, you know, the professional rodeo kid who can't be in classroom all the time because he's out traveling. Center for Independent Studies serves a lot of different needs for our kids but gives them an option when the traditional school calendar isn't going to be what they need.
So 50, maybe with some overlap for summer?
Yep.
Another 15 to 20 in Marcy?
Yep.
And then independent study?
10 to 15.
That's like a lot of kids.
Yep.
Wow, I had no idea.
Yep.
So are there interventions during the school year?
So we provide credit recovery both during the summer and during the school year. Marcy Basera and CIS
But before we get to the point of needing credit recovery, is there intervention to catch them before they fall?
You mean before they score an F? Yeah, hopefully. In the classroom, there's tons of it. Yeah.
And with counselors.
Yeah. Yeah. And we monitor our DNF rate and what classes and what class, you know, what, meaning what class, like where are we seeing DNFs happen and what grade levels are we seeing it happen?
Yeah, and we know about, I mean, we certainly have heard about the math interventions and, you know, additional periods tutoring, et cetera. I think there've been a little less structure to some of the other classes, like chemistry and stuff. And now that we have increased the graduation requirements, I mean, is that, has this always been these higher numbers?
I don't know that it's gone up.
Maybe a little bit of what we're seeing because of
Marcy's, Marcy's
Marcy's gone up.
Gone up.
Yeah. Credit recovery, not necessarily.
It's always been?
Yeah. It's about what it's always been.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'll say something that both Chris Miller and Bill are tackling are grading practices and that equitable grading practices.
Assistant?
Yeah.
And we made some changes to that last year that hopefully will bear some fruit here in the future.
Yeah, you pass new
There's a lot of discussion at the sites.
Policy on grading practices and homework that are, we're now implementing and working with and challenging past practices and
And we'd be happy to come back and do a presentation on credit recovery and interventions at another time. Yeah, sure.
And do you see enough, right?
That's part of it, yeah.
And who's in the population that's getting, you know, needing that intervention?
Right.
Is it a certain group or, you know, we providing that equity and access to
This could be an interesting, looking forward to additional goals
Yeah.
is lowering this, right?
Yeah. But we will always have a need as a high school for
Oh.
some sort of intervention and credit recovery and
For sure.
looking for approval for this updated course list for next year.
Yes. All right, we'll see that that happens. Thank you. All right. So this is an action item. I need a motion to approve the updated course list for online learning at MBA, CIS, and credit recovery programs at Healdsburg High School.
Second.
All in favor, oh, I'm sorry, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposition? All right, motion carries. And then, thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I do not, do we have a HEP report or HATA or CSEA this evening? All right. Okay, then we will go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Let's
Do you want to do the break?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Do we want to take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, yeah.
Okay, five minutes. Say we're back just a little before
I like a five-minute break.
It'll be fast-moving, I think, after this.
Okay, break it is. Five minutes.
Are you over?
Do we want? I'm like a poof of smoke and I get
Two personnel, A, parent outreach and education assistant job description.
Parent outreach?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, I was asking a question.
So this is a revision to the job description, basically because we wanted it to serve both secondary and primary campuses. And we also did, like I said earlier, change the rate of pay. Other than that, there's nothing substantively different in the job description. So first read for you, in response to the Equity Task Force recommendation to have a secondary position that
Yeah.
emulated what's done in the primary.
Let's do it.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's
With a cool parent cafe.
Any questions?
Is it good enough? Is it good enough not to approve this job description until
We're fine. Yeah, it's okay. Yep.
That was my only question.
Not a problem. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris? All right, thank you, Chris. Moving on to 10.3, school business, A, Healdsburg Unified School District LCAP. So Erin, if you'd rejoin us.
Sort of the big show.
The book.
Yeah, just in case. Okay. No major changes from the last board meeting where we had the public hearing and we discussed the LCAP in fair amount of detail. So we did separate the unconscious bias and restorative practices line items. So that's now their own action in Goal Three. So you'll see those are separated. But no major changes. A little bit of cleanup here and there to make sure that the budget aligns to the LCAP. So they're the same. So we're going to see in the budget and the LCAP talk to each other. What happens from here is, you know, hopefully you'll approve this tonight. We'll ship it off to the county office. They go through it with a fine-tooth comb as well and they will match our budget to the LCAP. If they see any issues, they will ask us to make changes. We hope it's like last year and we're pretty clean. We did not have to bring it back to you for any, you know, new votes or revisions last year. This is, like I said, the third year of a three-year plan. So it will go to SCO. They'll review it and ideally SCO will approve it before July 1. And then it gets shipped off to the California Department of Ed and the same thing happens with the charter, or pardon me, the same thing does not happen with the charter. We file it with the county office. They do not go through it with a fine-tooth comb.
Right.
You are the approving board for the charter school LCAP. So we'll do both of these tonight, ask for approval for the HUSD LCAP and then in a separate item, ask for the charter school approval. There is a federal addendum. I'll talk a little bit about that. It's a separate item. But any questions, anything else you'd like to say about the LCAP?
I wrestled with this. And it seems to me a little, excuse the phrasing, but a little anal on my part. But as I look at three, and I appreciate you separating the unconscious bias, as you read, as I read these, as a person read these, you start at the top and by the time you get to the bottom, 17 items down, you kind of fade. 3.15, 3.16, in my opinion, are very important. And I would suggest that we push those up to 3.5, in between 3.4, 3.5 currently. And then the rest, I have thoughts about, but I won't go there.
So we're counseled by the county office and the CDE not to change the numbering alignment. All of our budgeting codes have to do with the alignment that's in here. So every dollar that we spend has to be, well, I shouldn't say every dollar.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, they don't want us like moving things around. So it's not in priority order.
No, it's not prioritized, but I'm just saying as a person reads this, it's like, oh, well, the district is more interested in
Right.
This than that.
And, but I see your point. I withdraw my comments.
It's not intended to be a
I understand, I understand that.
Well, the document itself isn't, it's supposed to be an in-depth plan of how we allot dollars to priorities, but it's not intended to be a user-friendly, public-facing document, right? So, and that's the difference. Not that it's not a public document, it's a public document, but it's not there to easily be read. Let's put it that way. That was not a priority when they created the template.
Mike, I think it's an important comment in that next year, we will have a chance to literally start from scratch, right? We'll have a new template. We'll be starting year one of a three-year plan. So your point is well-taken and I think will guide the future work that we look for as we work on our strategic plan going forward.
I'll say buy no comments for next year.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it because I, I'm with you. We want to highlight what's priority.
What are they doing at work?
Right.
So my comment is still the same one I had last time. I just, for me, an LCAP usually has goals and they're measurable goals. And so you can measure, like, how do you know if you were successful or not? What was your target? Because I feel like that's missing in ours.
The data is missing?
Well, no, just the target, like, what's our, what's our, how do we know that we've been successful?
Mm-hmm.
And for each of these goals.
Right. So in each of the metrics, we list what the projected goal is. I'll give you an example here. If I can get to
Goal one, the annual measure
426. Yeah. So if you, if you look, I just am pulling to the back, like page 68. Wait, I'm in HCS. Hold on here.
So for, page 42, like, this is just the first page of that, of the more granular purple boxes. For page 426.
In your documents, I might say page 12 of 203.
Yeah. So, for example, let's go to page 120 of 203 in the HUSD.
120.
Page 120 of 203 in the HUSD.
See, ours is buried in a 600 page packet here.
We just have to do this.
Yeah.
That would be page 534 for the rest of you.
What is it?
534.
That's the packet number.
Yeah.
Sorry. The packet number, not the
Go to that page.
I do. Right now, she just said it's, what number did you say? 120?
Or, 121 of 203.
121, well, I'm getting there.
I see, I have like page numbers down the side.
Yeah, so I'm in the actual LCAP.
But this is
Yeah.
You're on 120. Page 120.
Okay, so Goal Two in our LCAP is about learning and instruction are active, student-centered, based in inquiry, and connected to the outside world, right? Big lofty goal. How do you know that learning is active, student-centered, inquiry is connected? So we've said our annual measurable outcomes are we want to increase fifth-grade students' technology skills and access as measured by learning.com. We know that 300 is proficient on that. In 2017, 18, we scored 342. We're still compiling the data for this year. We want to increase that 3% to 5% annually.
3.
So we go on, increase eighth-grade technology, CTE, state-approved standards, course access, college and career. You can see the, there's probably about 15 metrics there. We stay at the baseline back from 2016, update 2017, 2018. And then the goal gets shifted off from year to year. I've said this before, in documents like this, we have been counseled previously to use a metric that is considered to be attainable by county office and state. So increase 1% to 3% annually, at least 75%, maintain 100%. We've discussed previously that it probably would be good for us to have an internal working document where we get real about where, what we want.
Right. So when I look at some of this more nitty-gritties, line by line, goals and percentages, that's where I'm thinking about, like, looking at equity and measuring outcomes related to that. We should certainly be starting with this information. It is broken out by subgroups, as we know, because dashboard. And then if we want to drill down further, we can do that. Or we can do our internal, well, it's going to say 3% to 5%, but we're really looking for double-digit, right?
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, this is where we start because this is the roadmap.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
And I think the difference is, I understand the state and the feds, but for ourselves, for our community, for our kids, for our staff, we'll go to the double digits, if we will. But those have to be out there, so we see those. And this is, I want to say, somewhat perfunctory, because it is a state-fed document, but I...
And I'll say, we have a shortlist at the site levels, you know, for example, in here, embedded in here deeply, we're monitoring the number of Latino students that take an AP exam. That is a big deal, and that's something we watch, and we, we look at very closely, and we're working on.
So Erin, I just want to get clear, though. So you're saying the SCO and the state are telling you not to go above 5%?
Yes. So when our auditors have looked through this previously, and they, and we go to many, many meetings about the LCAP, we have previously been told to stick within the 1% to 3%. I'll say, you'll see A to G completion, we pulled it up to 3% to 5%. We had a ways to go. So, you know, one thing that I would love to offer, and we worked on this last year, Chris and I, with our, with our principals, is that each principal would have that shortlist of data. What are they working on at their site? What are the big hitter items? What is their data currently, and where do they hope to bring their site? Complete honesty, that in this year has not been the focus of the work we've done with our principals, is what is the data that they're monitoring at their site to this level? There's been other things that had to take precedent. But we have a shortlist for each school of what is the data. And I'll say, there are some things, like taking AP exams, A to G completion rate, the math, where we have very high expectations, because it is a big focus of the work that we're doing.
What's the penalty for saying 12% and not achieving it, you know, only achieving 8%? I mean, is there a penalty?
Well, so you heard Diane talking about differentiated assistance, right? The state and the feds are still figuring out what all that means. You know, comprehensive assistance, CSI, ASTSI, that we get different, the dust has not settled in what the new program for, what's the word I'm looking for, monitoring schools will be, right? We went from eight indicators to 10 indicators, looking at subgroups. You know, an example, Diane was talking about differentiated assistance, and we decided to dive into the suspension data, because we'd been doing a lot of work on English language, arts, and math previously. One of the subgroups is English language learners, had moved from the being in the yellow to being in the orange. When we look at that data, I'll tell you, and publicly, and maybe I'll lose my job for it, and I don't say that lightly, but when, when you look from year to year, and we are FEP a bunch of second graders, and those kids are no longer English language learners, and the, and the data that we're looking at is third through eighth, and then we take a 10-point hit because we didn't make participation rate at the high school, so they lowered us because of participation rate, and we are FEP kids who are English language learners, once they get into that 50% mark of standard nearly met. What they want on the data dashboard, with their color coding, is based on students who are at or above standard. We are FEP kids, and they're no longer in that EL group, once they're halfway into the standard nearly met. So it's a...
So what's the penalty? What's the, I mean, what's the, and I say penalty, what's, what's the back, what's the backside of if we don't make the goal?
Having to go to more meetings?
More meetings? Let's go for 1%.
It really is undefined intervention from the state and/or county, and that's, that's part of the issue, is we don't know sometimes what the penalty is, and it's undefined.
Okay. I mean, that could be good.
Yeah. And, and as I said in the action plan for Equity Task Force, the, this is work we're going to do next year. And we can have public-facing data that is, you know, the BHAG kind of data, the big hairy audacious goals that we want to set for the district, and maybe don't get said, per se, in this bureaucratic exercise that is the LCAP, but is what we're working towards.
And I'll say, there's a fair amount of PTSD in the districts that have had a program improvement label, as Healdsburg Elementary did, and you saw in the cover sheet for the everyday mathematics adoption, right? My predecessor was given no choice, no ability to pilot, and was told by date monitors, the district assistance teams, that they, she needed to get Common Core-aligned math material on her kid's desk by September, when the in-person visit was going to happen. So because of that, there was no process to choose curriculum for Healdsburg Elementary School. So that's the fear, right? That's the fear in people who've been with us for 10-plus years. That's the, some worst-case-scenario type, type situations, right? So until that dust settles, until we know what differentiated assistance and program improvement, and what are they really watching, what's important, and are dollars tied to it, honestly, we play, we play it a little safe, right? Because I think that's not a gamble we're willing to take yet.
On the dark side, it's Big Brother coming in and telling you what to do, even though Big Brother has no idea what we're about, potentially. I didn't say that.
They just take away, they take away some of our control.
Exactly.
No, okay. All right, that's when I'm, that's helpful.
Absolutely.
Right. And I'll say, it's improving. We, we all, when we're like, oh, God, we're going to get differentiated assistance, we got a lot out of that. Those meetings with our continuous improvement director from SCO were wonderful. It was a great process. We learned a lot. We looked at our data in a way that we wouldn't have otherwise. So our early out on this is that it's good, and we feel good about it, and we did get a lot out of our differentiated assistance. I mean, Chris has gone.
That's an ideal situation.
Right. But it had, that has not been past precedent, and there, there's still a lot of PTSD around that past precedent.
And I think there's, there's also, we can't ever make an assumption, because it's not the way it works, that anything's ever really going to be settled, because it's always going to be changed. I mean, if we've learned anything, it's that, well, well, and it's, it's like in mathematics instruction, and, and mathematical mindsets and brain theory, is that research is always coming out. That's, and then it's the nature of education.
So continuing, one more related question. The dashboard with the red and the orange, are those judgments based on our goals, or are they just based on increases and decreases, just generically?
Generic. It's the same for all school districts.
Yeah, the state has specific data sets it looks at.
Yeah, we don't get to choose what's in the dashboard.
But it is a growth model.
In terms of how they identify us as yellow, or orange, or red, or whatever, it's pretty much just sort of up as good and down as, you know what I mean? It's not, oh, you set 12%, and you only made three, and now you're in the red.
So the color is based on both status and change. So what is the numeric? What is the status of that data, and what is the change? And the idea there was, in the olden days, the API, right, average performance index, if you got 800, you'd sit back and 18, right? And so what, the, the idea behind both status and, and change is that everybody needs to do the work in multiple areas, right? So I appreciate that. I think what's hard is small school districts, big swings from year to year in one year. So there's some work, you know, there's some fine tuning there, and they are fine tuning. It's getting better. The district data dashboard is getting better. But, you know, there's still lots of movement out there.
And it's a one-year growth model, so they just simply do it from year to year. There's no over three- to five-year period, what's your growth? So you could take swings up and down, and yet in a five-year model, you're making amazing growth, but you were in the red for two years because of a cohort anomaly.
Yeah, but I will say, I really like this idea, and I appreciate the pressure, and I think it takes some discussion within the district leadership team to kind of get back of where we were about a year, year and a half ago, of what are the data points that we are really looking at, and that we are monitoring, and where do we want them to be? The idea that we actually have something like that at some point, so that we can have a, we can monitor a little bit differently, rather than these really low kind of goals that really aren't our goals.
They're not at all.
No, no, absolutely not. So it's something that we can kind of keep an eye on and feel like we're measuring, and see the, and see what our goal was in order to measure against it. Because to not have a goal, that is really that you're measuring against.
Well, your, your goal is just growth.
Yeah.
Right?
So something to think about, maybe you could put some thought behind that. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and we can dust off where we were 18 months ago. I mean, we have those documents, and it'd be, it'd be good to revive them. At some point. Yep. Now that you're going into summer, I don't want to... Yeah. Now you're going to have me, like, searching for it tonight. No, that's good. It's good, it's good, it's good feedback. It's good advice. Yeah, I appreciate it. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move forward then. If I could ask for a motion to approve the LCAP for the 1920 school year?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? All right. Moving on, B, the charter school LCAP. So as I mentioned before, no major revisions. HCS LCAP largely mirrors the HUSD LCAP. Anything grade six through 12 is stripped out. There is increased emphasis on the project-based learning and the expenditures that go along with that, and the work professional development that goes along with that, as well as the Spanish, Spanish language instruction that our charter school students get. You are the approving board for this? All right. May I ask for a motion to approve the charter school LCAP?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposition? All right. Moving forward to item C, federal addendum to the LCAP. So we, we spent some time talking about this last time. This is the first year this new document is in place. It's the first time that we have had to, that any district in the state of California has had to file the federal addendum. It's taking place of the LEA plan. So what the feds are asking for is, where in the planning process, where in the expenditures are your title monies, right? Title I is for low-income students to be receiving the same educational opportunities as, as any other student. Title II is for professional development, for certificated staff. Title III is for English language learners. I did want to point out, in Title III, we're, you know, using that as an example. And RSL, you brought forward, you know, that something that you have all learned in Santa Rosa City is to be careful that the Title III funds are not supplanting, which means that it's, it's being used specifically to support English language learners. So if you go to the second to the last page in the federal addendum, around Title III, and we're in kind of like a brown-yellow color box, Title III programs and activities, says this ESAP provision is addressed below.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think what we were looking at in the last board meeting is the box before that in blue. And so the, my understanding, and talking to other folks who are filling this out across our county, and looking at other federal addendums that were posted online from other districts, is that first box in blue around Title III is just a generality around professional development. That next box in kind of the brown, where it says this ESAP provision is addressed below, that's where we're calling out how we're using the Title III monies. And I'll say, both Steve and I are very careful not to supplant with our Title III money. So we use it, we purchase Rosetta Stone software, right? Nobody besides our English language learners are using Rosetta Stone. We use Achieve 3000 in our secondary English language learner classes. We, we use it to send folks to conferences. We use it to build our, our EL benchmarks, and to have our teachers work together to have release time to look at our ELD benchmarks. So we went through a federal program monitoring two years ago, had very similar way of spending our, our money. We're getting less and less, because we have fewer and fewer. But, you know, I just wanted to, to make, make a point that that's something that we keep an eye on. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because it is a nightmare if, if you get in trouble for supplanting. Yeah. So this, you know, we're asking for approval. We'll see, it's going to be interesting to see how this document changes over time. The narrative part of it is really mystifying to me, that they're not asking for any data. I guess they figure it's in the LCAP.
She's going to read them all.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I apologize for just kind of, you know, I went based on what I was seeing other people doing, and kind of following the lead of other CNI directors, and getting some advice from SCO. We'll file this, and we'll see what the feds and state agree to. I think this is, you know, none of us are signing in blood here on this one. I think it's like, this is pencil, and we'll see what they come back with us, and say we need to do differently or better. I anticipate this template's going to change. All right. All right. May I ask for a motion to approve the proposed federal addendum to the HUSD district's LCAP for 1920? All move?
All moved. Second.
All right. Then moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? All right, thank you. Moving forward to item D, Healdsburg Unified School District, 1920 budget. Steve?
Okay, now for the fun stuff. So we spent a lot of time on the budget last week, so I wasn't planning to get in too much depth tonight, but if you do have any questions, please feel free to jump in. Really briefly, talking about our major changes to revenue from, from last year. Our property, base property taxes, we're budgeting to be up 5-plus percent over last year's estimates. So we're, now we're building estimates on top of estimates, part of the beauty of our budget so far. The RDA property taxes, we're assuming 70% of what we received in 1819, which is 20% more than SCO was telling us to budget. Overall, our total, total property taxes are flat at this point, 1819 compared to 1920. None of us believe that's how they're going to finish, but that's where we are in terms of conservative budgeting for now. Couple of big-time hits to our revenues are the loss of the one-time statement, money from the state, that Governor Brown had been giving us the last several years. It was as much as $270,000 last year that we're not getting this, this next budget year. We also had the FIRE money come back to us in 1819, that $400,000 hit. So when you compare our revenue from 1819 to 1920, our revenue is down. These one-time revenues are gone, and property taxes are very conservative right now. On the expense side, no major changes, except for the 3.5% salary schedule increase that was approved 18 months ago now, that we put in place for, for this next fiscal year, and the STIRS and PIRS increases. We'll talk more about those briefly in a second. And just remember, it's just extremely early. We don't have final numbers for 1819, yet we're trying to build a 1920 budget, so it's kind of an interesting process. In terms of STIRS and PIRS, we had put up this chart last week as well, showing the crazy escalation in the rates for STIRS and PIRS. And while there's still some promise of relief from the state and the new budget, that hasn't been finalized yet, so we're not really sure what to expect. Wanted to go and throw in some dollars to this, though, so you can kind of see, what does that, you know, okay, great, it went up 3%, so what? Well, so what is, we were paying 1.2 million four years ago for STIRS and PIRS. Now we're paying 2 million, the same things, with less people, by the way, right? So that, that's the beauty of it. So that, that, that hit, you know, a half a percent change in workers' comp doesn't have a huge impact on our bottom line. A 2% or 3% change in STIRS and PIRS compounded year after year, it's getting expensive, and that has definitely put a strain on our budget.
And that is income, right? That is, that's income that we're paying to our employees towards their retirement. It would be like a private company putting into 401K.
And Mike, you had asked last week about, what are the employees paying? They're still paying 8% or 8.25% depending on when they've joined STIRS and PIRS. So the employee contribution hasn't increased. Right, a little bit higher, right. But, you know, so it's the employer is paying the cost of this.
So this is the state shifting this cost from their budget to the individual school budget?
Correct, because they haven't performed as well as they thought they'd perform in their projections. They haven't collected enough money from the employer or the employees in past years. Now they're trying to make it up in four or five years on the backs of the school districts. It's expensive. So hopefully there will be, will be some relief whenever the budget gets signed later this week or next week.
I would just like to thank you for, no, no, truly. When I was, when I was reading the notes and assumptions...
The narrative piece of the budget, right?
The narrative piece. It was really helpful. Thank you for that. It was, you know, not me trying to extrapolate stuff, but there. And I, I really appreciated that, when I was reading it late at night one night.
Thank you for reading it.
But, so thank you very much, because it really clarifies, it, it gives me a frame for me to look at then, page after page after page of numbers.
It's a little bit like the LCAP, right? How do you pull out what's really important? That is 100... How do you pull out what's really important out of this 100, 150-page document? Well, if we can put that into three or four pages, hopefully it helps the public, it helps you and it helps us over time.
Well, it helps me a lot, you know, I appreciate that.
Agreed.
Moving on, so what has changed since last week is really the important thing, I think, for tonight. Remember, we were deficit spending even more than we wanted to be deficit spending?
Yes.
There were only really three changes that I made. They were all on the expense side. The first thing is we had about $126,000 in expenses for a program that we actually get reimbursed for by SCO. I hadn't put the reimbursement piece in. So it was misstating by $126,000 what our true expenses were. So fixing that helps a bunch. Looking at the special ed budget a little bit more, for the non-public school students, we're budgeting, we had budgeted what we think we're gonna be doing the POs for, for all these students going to the NPS schools. But as Diane can attest, a lot of the NPS kids don't show up every day and we don't get charged every day in that way. So we were able to lower that budget by $100,000 and still be pretty conservative, I think.
Wow.
But again, but if somebody moves into the district tomorrow, that all changes, right?
I know, but that, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, no, even for like this year, we had over $700,000 in contracts with the NPS schools. We're gonna pay less than $600,000 based on actual attendance. So. It's, it's not good.
It's not good that the kids aren't there, but...
Right, right.
But it's good for our budget.
Right.
Yeah.
And then I also lowered the IT budget some. We had built in the, the year rate contribution. We talked about this three or four months ago. We have the potential to receive about $200,000 in funding from the E-rate program for IT infrastructure. They ask for a 20% commitment from us. They are extremely slow in getting those fundings approved right now. We should have had approval months ago. We still don't. So I took it out of the budget for the time being until we do get approved and we'll come back to you in the fall hopefully and say, hey, guess what? We got this money now, can I have $40,000 to go pay our 20%? You're gonna say absolutely and we'll, we'll go forward.
That's fine, yeah.
So where do things stand, kind of jumping to the bottom line? Looking at the multi-year projections, we're gonna finish, we think we're gonna finish 1819 with 70%. I think it'll probably be a little better than that. Projecting to finish 1920 with 14.7% in reserves. 2021, I had to tweak expenses just a little bit. Quarter of a million dollars in our budget is just a little bit. So if, if all of our assumptions are true, and none of them are true, but if all of our assumptions are true, we'd have to cut a quarter of a million dollars in expenses for next year to maintain our board-approved reserves.
Right.
And then just doing that alone with our increases in revenues that we've built into the budget with no salary increases built in in future years, even though that's certainly a priority for us, we would be right around our 13, 14% reserves in the multi-year. Yeah, we're still kind of deficit spending a little bit in, I think, two to three years, but we have the reserves in place to kind of, to weather that, so.
And again, we, we don't have, we don't know what our revenue is for this school year that just ended, so.
Or our expenses, but other than that, we've got a good handle on it.
So.
Anyway, that's it. We'll come back to you in September with the unaudited actials, see how we actually finish up 1819. We may try to tweak the budget a little bit between now and then as well. We typically don't do anything with the budget until December at first interim. But I think there's so much we don't know right now that we may feel better if we go and tweak the budget some and bring it to you in September, so we'll see.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the district 1920 budget?
So moved.
All second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? All right, great, thank you, Steve.
You're not done with me yet.
I know. The consolidated application for funding, item E.
So this is one of the federal requirements. We have a big piece that's due on June 30th. We were not able to get it done in time for the packet, but it is on your blotters tonight, so. It's just the same stuff you see every June 30th. Yes, we're applying for Title I. Yes, we're applying for Title II.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we're applying for Title III. Yes, we're applying for Title IV. This will be the second year of that new revenue stream that helps pay for some of our tech support in the classrooms for our teachers and things like that. Yes, St. John's wants to participate in our Title II money again. No, they don't want to try to do Title I this next year because that didn't work out very well for them last year. And that's, that's kind of it. That's really the gist of it. It's another box we have to check. It doesn't even get into the dollar value, it's kind of what we're gonna see from Title I, Title II, Title III and Title IV. We don't get that until February. And the year's eight months over at that point, so.
Well, I move that we accept the consolidated application. I'm trying to save Jamie some time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Great, thank you. Thank you, Steve. And the next one, certificated salary schedule for 1920?
Right, so we, about 18 months ago when we brought the raises forward for 1819 and 1920, you approved the salary schedule for this year with a three-and-a-half percent raise across the board for all of our employees. We're changing the title of the department chairs to now be grade level? I'm sorry, I forget what it is.
Elementary.
Elementary. Right, so anyways, that's the only change to the salary schedule. There are no dollar value changes, just changing that name to reflect what we're doing now.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the certificated salary schedule for 1920.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the, does the leadership team, I guess, who's on the leadership team? Is it a person from each grade level?
That's my understanding.
I mean, it could, you know, it's kind of...
Yeah, at the secondary, it's department chairs and at the elementary level, it is a grade level.
Grade level reps.
Thanks, I assumed that, but never assume.
And this is just the elementary, this is not to address the...
The change is the elementary, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? All right, thank you. And then item G, classified salary schedule for 1920?
Right, so this reflects two changes to the schedule you had approved previously. It adds the construction assistance to the CASA program at the high school and it adds the new parent outreach and education assistant.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Thank you.
Great.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the classified salary schedule for 1920?
So moved.
All right, any further discussion?
Actually, if I could clarify, it does say assistant on the salary schedule. We went back and forth on this job title. Did it land a coordinator or assistant?
It landed with what's in the board packet, which is coordinator, the job description. Oh, it says assistant. I've been calling it coordinator apparently, so, yeah.
I just think whatever the job description says in the salary schedule should say the same thing.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll make the change that we need, is there a change?
There's no change.
Okay, we're good. All right, you're just a folk.
We have to change Chris's terminology.
All right, sounds good. We know who we're talking about.
I have a quick question. On, on the salary schedule, when I look down, it says range and it starts with D, which means that A, B, and C, nobody's in there, which is probably good because they're pretty low. Do we ever use A, B, and C, that range?
Historically, we have, yes. There, there's some of the other ranges you see on here have had positions in the past.
And then they reclassed.
So we just kind of hang on? I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's actually kind of silly, to be honest.
I mean, part of me is, I'm purging my garage, so I'm kind of in that. Do we want to keep those on there? It's just, we'll change it today, but I'm just asking.
It's actually important because the way you increase the salary schedule is you go to step A1, add three-and-a-half percent, and then it multiplies out on the two-and-a-half percent, 5% changes. So it is, so it is kind of integral to how the raise gets granted, which we need to maybe revisit at some point. But yeah, those aren't even minimum wage anymore, right? So we can do something with those if we wanted to.
Right.
Well, and I was gonna say, does minimum wage apply to public?
Yes, it does. There is some pressure.
So when we're going to $15?
That's, we, we are keenly aware.
By 21, 20.
We've never talked about that.
Yeah.
By 22, minimum wage.
Oh, we have.
18 or 19.
In years past.
Yeah, but I mean, not when we're looking ahead at a couple of years' budget. I mean, I...
No, no, we've talked about that.
But does that bump everyone up? How does that, how is that, well, that's another discussion.
Yes, it is, enclosed session, yeah.
Yeah, very good, okay.
But hopefully the salary schedule increases that we're able to give as a district keep us above that. If not, we'll have to get a little more creative.
And we did talk about that 18 months ago when we were, when we did the two-year agreement. That's a part of what we were doing.
Cool, okay. All right, so any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you. And Steve, again, the certificated management, management salary schedule for 1920, item H.
So back in the fall, we came to you with a new job title for the certificated management salary schedule. That was the lead psychologist slash program specialist. We weren't smart enough to bring the 1920 salary schedule to you at the same time. I wasn't smart enough, so now we're bringing the 1920 salary schedule to you.
All right. May I, I'll move to approve the certificated management salary schedule for 1920. Do I have a second?
So, I, I didn't get the calculator out, but it, the math just seemed a little weird, like at nine years. Help me understand this. So at like year nine, it goes up 11.2% from the year seven pay? Or is it from like a year eight pay that's implied?
No, it's a two-year cell that you're in.
It goes up 2.8% every two years.
What? Two point...
You don't go up every year, you go up every two years.
But, so what's the 11.2% then?
That's that 2.8% times four.
Oh.
So you take what's in the base salary, you go up from there.
Thank you. Interesting, okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you. Moving on to item I, contract with Counterpoint Construction Services.
Many of you are familiar with the work Counterpoint does with us. Without Tanea on our construction projects, we would be paying a lot more money and getting a much inferior product. She's amazing. She has a great support network with her whole company. So this is just renewing their agreement for the next year.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the contract with Counterpoint Construction Services?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go Tanea.
Yeah, go Tanea, that's right. All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you.
And briefly, if I could jump in with Tanea. You may have noticed last week during the, when the, our little excursion outside during the fire alarm, first person to get there was Tanea.
Yes.
She's married to a firefighter, she heard it on the, and came to see what was happening, so.
That's cute. That's awesome. All right, and she doesn't charge extra for that, so we're good. Okay, good, all right.
She's a resident.
That's right.
And lives close by.
Yeah.
All right. Item J, inspector of record for the Healdsburg High School new gym and locker room renovation project.
Right, so we have to have an IOR or inspector of record for every major construction project we do. This is just a new contract with Bruce Mansell, who has been our inspector for several years now.
Move approval?
All second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you. Moving on to item K.
I'm sorry. I just turned the page. Oh my gosh.
Item K.
This is a normal June board meeting.
Professional.
I know, I know.
Commissioning services for the Healdsburg High School new gym and locker room renovation project.
So this is a new one for us. This is a new thing we have to do. Because the new gym and locker room is over 10,000 square feet, we are obligated to hire what is called a commissioning agent. They probably had a very good lobbyist once upon a time in Sacramento and figured out a way to carve out a little niche for themselves. It's actually a good thing, it's one more layer of protection for us. They're on the hook to certify that all of our HVAC systems, all of our plumbing systems, all of our systems inside the building work according to the architect's specs. So for, for $19,000 and something dollars, we get another sign-off. So if something does go wrong with any of these facilities, we have someplace else to go and say, hey, wait a second, you said this was working. But it's, it's required by the states, we don't have a choice anyway. But it is another level of protection for the district.
So who's 3QC?
That's the name of the company that we've hired to be our commissioning agent.
Are they any good?
I don't think it's a very big market, but they come very highly recommended, yes.
Okay. I just wondered.
Yeah, no, we, we do too. It's our first time using one, so if we're not happy, we'll...
We'll find out.
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and move to approve a contract with 3QC Incorporated for professional commissioning services for the Healdsburg High School gym and locker room renovation project. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, thank you. Moving on to item L, inspector of record for the Healdsburg High School building a re-roof and HVAC replacement project.
Same spiel as 30 seconds ago, but for a different project.
Move for approval?
And I...
Any discussion?
This is going to be completed July 28?
That's, we're moving back into the DO July 28th, we think. The project will not be finished until quite that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're, we're a little tired of hearing jackhammers and things already and it's only been the...
Well, it's hard not to work in your own office.
Yeah, especially with the jackhammer outside your window. Double, double fun.
Okay.
Just cut down trees right and left.
Just the diseased ones and the ones with roots doing damage to our buildings, yes.
Get new ones.
Most will be replaced. With much more appropriate.
So are you still working out of your office?
No, no, we're all...
No, you had to move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, I was in the DO for a while tonight and I was pretty sure somebody's gonna fall through and land on me. It's, that roof sounds a little, a little rough, so.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.[1469.44] All right, it's been moved and seconded. May I have everyone in...
I second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? All right. Excuse me, moving on to item M, child nutrition fee schedule.
Same rates as, as this year. Yeah, we could look at raising rates a little bit, but most of our students are on free and reduced, so that doesn't generate any more revenue for the program. Our contributions from the general fund to the food service program are still, I think, acceptable for us. So, we may want to revisit this next year, but I think for 1920, same rates are, are good.
Move approval?
All second. Any further discussion? So, again, this is to, to consider approving no increase, right? I just want everyone to know, I didn't read that out, so those that are listening in. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Okay, item N, the education protection account resolution number 19-30.
So, this is another annual item. So, we get a couple pots of money, one for the charter school, one for the district. It's called the education protection account. It's about $250,000, I think, for both combined. We just have to prove that we're not spending any of this money on administrator salaries. We put it all to teacher salaries as an offset to this. The district money goes to the secondary level, the charter school money goes to the elementary level, offsets some of our teacher salaries. That's what this, this resolution documents.
Thank you, Steve. I'll go ahead and, a motion to approve adopting resolution number 1930, the education protection account. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, this is a resolution.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. That motion passes unanimously. Item O, resolution 1931, the declaration of indefinite salaries.
Love that title.
Another one of our annual fun ones. All, all this really means is that we would have the option to come back sometime in the middle of 1920 and do a salary schedule increase. If we didn't do this, theoretically, our salaries are definite for 1920 and could not be increased. It could, it enables us to do a retroactive raise if we choose to, or even a mid-year, I believe.
So moved.
Not a fan, but yeah.
I'm going to move.
Yeah.
I'm going to beat you. So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Aye.
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 Yeah, it's resolutions all the way.
Yep, I know, they're all down there.
I know.
All right. P, resolution 1932, authorization to make budget... Don't be my junior high student. Authorization to make budget transfers between fund balances and expenditures at close of year.
This just lets us do budget transfers. You don't get a chance to approve a revised budget anymore in our process. This allows us to make transfers if we need to.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? A roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Here's unanimously. Q, resolution 1933, authorization to make temporary transfers between funds at close of year.
Right, any of our funds can have negative cash balances during the year. One of the, consent items every month is our cash balances by fund. You see, some of the funds are negative from time to time, just because of timing of outflow versus the revenue coming in from the state. One day of the year, every fund has to have a positive cash balance, and that's June 30th. So, this allows us to move some money, if we need to, into the cafeteria fund, the state preschool fund, to make sure they're solvent on that one day. Then we put the money back as soon as we can in July.
I have a question. What happens if it's not?
You and your what-ifs.
I mean, we go through all these...
I think that would cause a problem with our audit. I think that would, I don't think we want to find out.
No, I mean...
Yeah, again, is there, is there a financial penalty? No, probably not.
I don't know, there's a legality.
Yeah, it's a legality. It's going to be an audit finding. It's going to be...
Okay.
But we don't know. Let's not find out.
Let's not find out.
There's no financial benefit one way or the other to doing it, but...
So, so move to approve 1933.
Okay, so we had a move by Mike, second by your cell.
Judy and Mike.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was, I heard your cell's voice.